Good evening, Camarillo residents. I'm David Marin with the League of Women Voters. Welcome to our second forum tonight to hear from the candidates running in districts one and two. We will have one minute opening statements followed by responses to the questions you've submitted. None of the candidates. Well, and then we'll be following that up with closing statements. At this time, I'm first going to share a little map so that we can remind everybody about the districts in Camarillo. This shows us that District One, who we're going to hear from candidates and District Two candidates, are in the western part of the city. District One going up along Los Poses towards Los Poses Country Club in that area. District Two more below the 101 freeway and part of the midtown area. It doesn't really matter as far as supporting candidates, if you live in their district or not. I'm sure they would all love your vote, but if you can't vote for them, I'm sure they would love to have you donate or volunteer for them as well. And keep in mind regardless of their positions for their own district, they do represent the entire city. With that, it's my pleasure to introduce the President of the League of Women Voters, Kathy Morgan.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. The League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 with the mission of educating a new group of voters, women, who were granted the right to vote nationwide with the passage of the 19th Amendment six months later. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization committed to providing voters with factual, non-biased information, and as such does not support a particular candidate or political party. The League today continues with the mission of empowering voters and defending democracy by registering voters, providing information about the candidates and the issues, getting out the vote and supporting fair and transparent elections. The candidate forums are an opportunity for voters to hear from the various candidates and to get the information they need to make an informed choice when they vote. Attendees to the forum are invited to submit the questions they wish asked of the candidates when they register. The candidates have not been provided the questions in advance and each candidate will have the opportunity to answer the questions posed. We are glad that you are here tonight to hear from our candidates. We hope that you get the information you need to make an informed choice. And at this time, I would like to turn it back to tonight's moderator, David Marin. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. We'll begin with our opening statements. We randomly assigned numbers earlier and Susan Santangelo will be our first candidate representing District Two. When you're ready, Susan, one minute.
Thank you so much, David, and thank you to the League of Women Voters. And most of all, thank you to everyone who has turned in tonight to learn more about local elections. I am Susan Santangelo. I am the current Vice Mayor of Camarillo and I'm completing my first term as council member. In 1976, my family moved to Camarillo and I've called it home ever since. Both sets of my grandparents followed us. They moved to Luger Village where they lived out the rest of their lives. I chose to raise my sons, Nick and Matt here, my fond memories of spending Saturdays at the soccer fields and the baseball fields. My parents, Edie and Sal, still live here and they're very active in the community. Professionally, I have worked for local hospitals and nonprofits for over 28 years as a nurse in management and educational roles. I have managed large workforces with limited resources. I know how to critically think under pressure and how to collaborate to meet people where they are. I have enjoyed implying my skills to serve the community as a city council member. If you would like to learn more about me, please visit votessusanantangelo.com and I look forward to discussing the issues tonight.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Dirk Lay from District Two.
Hi, my name's Dirk Lay. I'm a candidate for Camarillo City Council District Two. And I can't speak for the rest of these guys, but I'm having a really good time running for office for the first time. President Kennedy famously said, "Ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country." So along those lines, I'm asking you to do your duty as a voter. Check out my website at www.electdirklay.com and give me some feedback. Spend five minutes. If you like what I'm saying, share my website with your friends so they can make their own informed decision and encourage them to share it with their other friends. Maybe ask for a yard sign or two. Here's the important part, I do not seek endorsements because they come with strings attached and I do not want your money. You'll never hear that again. If you don't vote and if you don't research your options, you kind of lose your right to complain about the government you see, you get. So do yourself and your family a favor and reconsider options.
I've stuck there. And Sylvia Garcia is our next candidate from District Two.
Hi, my name is Sylvia Garcia and I have lived in Camarillo most of my life. I joined the military when I was 24 and that took me to North Carolina for 10 years as a psychological operation specialist, which really deals with more like public affairs, coming up with objectives and disseminating information. I came back to my hometown in 2010 and went to UCSB where I am majoring in English and Geography. I have since decided that I wanted to go into the mental health field due to experiences that I came. And that is one of my platforms is mental health as well as education. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate for District One, David Tennyson.
Good evening. I've been a Camarillo resident since 1979. I'm a United States Marine Corps vet with four years of service. I'm a 32-year veteran of the Ventura County Sheriff's Office. During my tenure with the Sheriff's Office, I had the pleasure of serving Camarillo for six and a half years, five of which I served as your Police Chief. I've been engaged in nonprofit director board positions and in service clubs for almost a continuous 30 years. I served on the Board of the Camarillo Family YMCA, the Board of Directors of the Boys and Girls Club of Camarillo. I was a member of the Optimist Club, the Breakfast Rotary Club, and now the Pleasant Valley Lions Club. I raised my daughter here. She's raising two beautiful grandsons, Evan, five, and Ethan, eight. And I'm involved as a volunteer in their school. I have the passion, the energy, and the time to serve the residents of Camarillo. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we will move on to Sylvia Schnapp, District One.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sylvia Munoz Schnapp. I'm a veteran of local government and I feel I'm the best candidate for Camarillo City Council. I have 12 years of experience as former mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council Member from 2008 through 2020. My vast experience includes understanding and developing solutions for regional water issues, transportation, housing, land conservation, job creation, and historical preservation. I have invested in Camarillo by volunteering as Chair of the Ventura County Climate Emergency Council, member of the Boards of Director of CBC Federal Credit Union, St. John's Regional Medical Center, EDC Collaborative, and VACIDA, and have volunteered for Interface Camarillo Rent Review Mediation Commission and the Ventura County Community Foundation. My background and overall capabilities are well-suited for Camarillo City Council and I have worked in Camarillo for over 25 years while making national impacts to keep naval-based Ventura County open and creating United Ways Day of Karen. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will hear from next candidate, Jeff Walker, District Two.
Thank you, David. My name's Jeff Walker. Four generations of my family have lived in Camarillo. I'm also a second-generation small business owner. Owning a small business in Camarillo is a dream come true for me and I'm glad to be back in a great community operating small business. I'm also proud graduate of Camarillo High School. Like many of my friends that attended Camarillo High School, I have parents that are retired here and a younger generation that want to make a living here. We need to find a balance that maintains the quality of life for our retired residents while providing housing for the next generations of Camarillos that want to live here. We need to increase pedestrian bike safety, allow more tasks to be done without cars. We need to consider the needs of those who live in neighborhoods and not just those who drive through them. My history of joining nonpartisan teams is what led me to run for office. I'm Jeff Walker. Join our team and let's make a better Camarillo for all.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our first question. Dave, you're up first. And the question is about water. Obviously, this is an impactful issue in the city of Camarillo. Reduced watering days, limited amounts of water coming in. Share with us your plans for dealing with water conservation, providing more water to the city, and getting through the drought.
Was that for David Tennyson?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I think that the city of Camarillo has taken remarkable steps with the desalter plant. My understanding is right now we pump 40% of our water from groundwater sources in Camarillo. And once the alter comes fully online and we're importing 60%, once the desalter comes fully online, we will be importing less than 20% of our water from MWD and Keyagus. I think the city's taken adequate steps with restrictions put on by MWD and Keyagus to limit watering, encourage drought tolerant plants. I think Camarillo City Hall is an excellent example of how you can have a great-looking and beautiful residential landscape with drought tolerant plants. And I followed their example myself back in 2016 and ripped out my lawns and put in drought tolerance. So education, the desalter coming online, I think are excellent steps in the direction of conserving water and making sure we have sustainable sources going forward.
Thank you, David. And we'll go to Susan for the same question, your position or your plans for dealing with the water crisis.
Thank you. So, you know, we are in a drought, but there are a lot of things at play that a lot of people don't understand completely about water. And it's really hard to be in a community to watch all of our lawns going dry when there are other communities that are fed water through the state water project that are not facing the same restrictions as us. And a lot of that has to do, the state water project is how we import our water from up north and that's managed through Metropolitan and Keyagus. The infrastructure to get that water to us is not good enough. So there are other communities getting water from the state water project that are getting more water than us because of the infrastructure. And so one of the things we need to do and make sure that we keep the pressure on at Metropolitan and that state water project so that there is equitable delivery of the services that we pay for and that's the water. The desalter will be online soon. And actually, I just am going to correct, we are currently 40% locals, 60% imported. That will flip-flop. We will now be 60% local because of the desalter and 40% imported.
Thank you. Sylvia Schnapp, you're up next as far as your plans to deal with the water situation and conservation.
Thank you so much. You know, I applaud the city of Camarillo for moving forward with the desalination plant. When I was part of the Port One ME Water Agency, we took a look at some options that we had. You know, what could we do that would encourage regional display of, you know, bringing in additional water? And so I applaud the city for doing this. When it comes on board, we had learned a long time ago that it was going to actually create and sustain, sustain what Camarillo needed, but create 30% more water for the region. And so we need to continue to look at alternative solutions, ways of increasing our water supply, but also guaranteeing that water for not only our residents, for business and agriculture at the same time. And so by conservation and limiting the times of watering, that could be one step, but also it's part of education and encouraging others to come alongside and work as a regional team to develop more resources and ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Dirk, same question to you about handling the water situation and conserving?
Yeah, right now, the only thing we can do is conservation. My front yard is brown as can be. So, you know, I'm doing my part and David's right. The vegetation around the city council is beautiful. I'm trying to get my wife to buy off on changes, some of that, but she doesn't like cacti for some reason. We do need to lobby the state to stop the fund or to defund that ridiculous high-speed train to nowhere and other silly projects that take up billions of dollars and put it into water storage infrastructure, which we definitely need. And then finally, we have to be very careful with the related issues of managing growth of housing and business to make sure we do not overwhelm our water supply as it is now and it will be in the near-term future.
Thank you. Jeff, same question to you about dealing with water troubles?
Yeah, there's, you know, two items I'll add to the discussion. My first concern is the water, the city's water utility fund. We are not covering our expenditures with revenue in there and we've seen working capital decline from 17 million to about 9 million projected in the next fiscal budget. So we're kind of kicking the can down the road here. We're going to have to find a way to either lower the costs or increase the revenue there. Otherwise, we're going to have to find more funds to replenish the working cap and bring them up to the proper reserves that need to be in that fund. Otherwise, I'd look to, I'd start talking to businesses. We have a lot of residential ways of ripping out turf and, you know, encouraging people to buy proper washing machines. In the restaurant business, you know, we swapped out all our urinals, the water's urinals. I can't tell you how much water is that saving. And there's a lot of businesses out there I think that could benefit from coming to the table with thoughts about, hey, here's how I can save water in my business.
Thank you. And Sylvia Garcia will wrap up with you on dealing with the water shortage and conservation.
Yes, I agree with some of the other ideas about water conservation. I think that we do need to invest in capturing rainwater. We get so much rainwater and then it goes out into the ocean and disappears and we aren't able to recycle it for later use. I have heard about creating a reservoir which to capture the colicus water and I think that is something that we should be looking at. And also when we're looking at new housing developments to to look at being able to recycle water from gray water into watering, whatever you need, the lawns and things like that. And I would also cautious about using underwater because it's taking salt from the ocean and once you do that, then the land becomes unusable for crops. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, as your moderator, need to interrupt and make an apology. I did not explain at the beginning of this forum that one candidate for District One, Vishnu Patel, was unable to join us. And per league rules, candidates can send a candidate statement. He's actually busy with, he's a pharmacist at Ralph's and he's been busy with the vaccine vaccination and other things. So he sent over his statement and I will go ahead and read that at this time. Hello, my name is Vishnu Patel and I seek your support in my campaign to become a Camarillo Council Member in the November 8, 2022 election. I have been a resident of Camarillo for over 32 years, following my immigration to the USA from India. I am married to Mahu Bala Patel and we have raised two daughters, Ruby and Mira, who both have achieved successful professional careers in Northern California. Since 1992, I've been employed as a pharmacy manager at Ralph's. I absolutely love the city of Camarillo and I'm proud to have witnessed the growth and beauty of this vibrant city over the last three decades. I feel that is now my responsibility to give back some of my time and talents to serve the city. As a pharmacy manager, I currently serve over 5,000 clients from all walks of life. I've been an active member of the India Friends Association, volunteer at the Ventura County Hindu Temple, and Board of Director of the Camarillo Ranch Foundation. I believe all of these experiences uniquely qualify me for a career in public service. He also invites you to stop by Ralph's if you want to learn more. So I apologize for not doing that at the proper time. And with that, we'll go ahead and see if I can do a better job on the rest of the forum. We're going to move on to our second question and Sylvia Schnapp, you'll be up first on this one. Lots of questions about affordable housing, new housing, developing open space. How should the city handle developing the housing if we are already exceeding some of the state requirements? Sylvia, the question we're going to start with you though is share with us your plans to handle housing projects. Where do you think they should be developed? And are you in favor of rezoning of any open space?
Thank you. So housing is really important. We understand that we have very limited supply and very limited supply coming on board. And we do have some arena numbers that are handed out through the state to the locals, including city of Camarillo that we have to abide by in terms of building for the future. Not only for the future, but for folks now. I believe it's going to take collaborative approach in order to put this together. I currently work for the Ventura County Community Development Corporation and we help low to moderate income individuals and households acquire their new homes. And so we have seen the drop these last couple of months because of other things that are happening, you know, rates and everything else. I'm not in favor of taking farmland. I think that we need to continue to collaborate. Maybe it is about zoning and design as well as maybe creating more than one story of homes. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go to the other Sylvia, Sylvia Garcia, for this question, same question. Share with us your plans for addressing the housing crisis and do you believe in rezoning of open space?
Yes, thank you. I think that we need to do more for, to have lower housing for individuals. If you look at somebody that's making $17 an hour, which is most of our residents in Camarillo, they should not be paying more than $1,000 in rent to have a comfortable lifestyle. And right now, when bedrooms are going for 2,300 to 7,000. So, I mean, 2,300 to about 3,000 and up. So that is just not feasible for our working class. So I would look at ADUs to help people build those additions in their backyards. Also, micro houses for single individuals. We know a lot of our youths are, young people are living with their parents because of lack of resources. So I think we just need to get creative with, with our housing and to accommodate people.
Dirk, same question to you as far as your plans for addressing the housing needs and looking at rezoning of open space?
Yeah, housing affordability is basically a function of supply and demand of the housing unit. It's also the mortgage interest rates. The, the recent inflation that was caused by excessive federal and state government spending and some of the ridiculous COVID restrictions on business operations created an environment where houses have become very much unaffordable just compared to a year ago. If you want to return to low mortgage rates, you got to stop voting for these people that spend money like drunken sailors. Recently, the governor said, starting in 2035, you had to buy an electric car. And then a few days later, he begs us not to charge those cars because the electric grid was near its limit. Never make a commitment for housing unless you're sure we have the water and the other resources to support all those extra people.
Thank you. Jeff, please share with us your thoughts about how to address housing crisis and deal with open space?
Yeah, you know, housing is, is an issue that is going to dovetail into other issues. I'm sure we will discuss tonight. We need to find solutions to provide housing. I think the first step is to make our neighborhoods walkable and bikeable. The second district in particular is very walkable and bikeable, but we lack proper infrastructure to allow the use of daily tasks without cars. This will minimize the impact of traffic and parking if you have neighborhoods where people are able to easily get about without a car. I think we've got to look at redevelopment, not open space. And for me, new housing development better come with an economic development element and/or a recreation element because we need both of those in this town and housing needs to come along with that attachment as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. David, same question to you as far as your plans for housing?
I think the city has done a fairly admirable job right now. The majority of their affordable housing units are deed restricted as permanent or long-term. One of the things in the city's general plan is the Camarillo Common Specific Plan, which will impact the Old Town area that calls for mixed-use residential, commercial cafeterias, restaurants with sidewalk dining and things. And 50% of the housing units in that specific plan are designated for lower-income housing units. I think those are the kinds of infill opportunities Camarillo has. Obviously, taking farmland is something that we're not going to do because of the voter-passed initiative SOAR. And I come from a farming community in South Dakota and I respect all of the proceeds we get from our agricultural land.
Thank you. And Susan, we'll wrap up with you on your plans for addressing the housing crisis.
Thank you. This is, this is such an important discussion topic because I, you know, my kids are in college and I wonder every day if my kids will be able to afford to move back home and raise their families here. And so, you know, this is really important. We are in a crisis. It's a crisis of affordability and accessibility. What I have done so far on the council, I'm really proud of the Stock Lumber Project, which is 100% affordable units. We also have units within this project that are designated for ownership as well as rental and that are designated for veterans and for disabled people. One of the other things that we are doing right now is an active affordable housing buyback program where when we see affordable units which are scattered all over the city, you probably don't even know where they all are. When, when we see that they are going to sell, they can sell at market rate, which loses that affordable covenant. The city buys that house and in doing so, we can extend that affordability covenant another 55 years. What I will continue to do is a multi-pronged approach at our housing issues.
Thank you, Susan. Dirk, we'll go ahead and stand, start with you on this next question. It's somewhat related to housing is the subject of Old Town, which affects everybody in the city. Share with us your thoughts about strengthening the economic and the housing elements of Old Town or revitalizing it?
Yeah, I like Old Town. Old Town's got a cool vibe. One thing at one point I do want to make is that I don't have any business interest that would cause me to have to recuse myself from discussing, discussing improvements in Old Town or actually anywhere else in the district. Not everybody else can say that. And I'm not really sure how you're going to make improvements when you're not allowed to vote and you're not allowed to take part in the discussions. But other than that, the district, it's important to have a thriving Old Town. But there's more to the district than Old Town and you have to look at the entire district and you have to look at the entire city.
Thank you. David, same question to you about any plans you have or actions you want to see the city take in regards to Old Town?
One of the things that has occurred with COVID is the experience of outdoor dining. I love going to the restaurants on the boulevard, being sent, able to sit outside on a pleasant evening and enjoy a meal with friends. As I mentioned earlier, I think the Camarillo Common Specific Plan is a significant step in the right direction to help develop Old Town for not only businesses, including restaurants, retail, housing, and office space. And it, it should be geared towards, and I believe the specific plan actually addresses that to a walkable community to lessen the need to drive and have motor vehicles down there.
Thank you. Jeff, same question to you. Do you have any specific plans for what the city should do to strengthen or revitalize Old Town?
Well, certainly Camarillo Old Town has been a passion project of mine for over 15 years. Having served on the Camarillo Old Town Association and tried to form a business improvement district, which are proven to do what they say, improve the neighborhood. Strong cities have downtowns, strong downtowns. Ours needs improvement. It really does. It needs to be more walkable and bikeable. We also have to stop with the abandoning buildings in Old Town. We're now up to four. That's, we got the fourth in the, in the last three years. We have to do something with these buildings because abandoned buildings detract from property values and the longer they sit abandoned, the longer that impact is. So we really need to have a plan to form a business district down there, deal with the abandoned buildings and have Dizdar Park be developed into an asset that serves the neighborhood. The current plan does not.
Thank you. Susan, same question to you about plans to revitalize downtown or Old Town?
Thank you. It seems like every, every two years we talk about revitalizing Old Town. And I worry about it too. We're emerging from a pandemic and the economic uncertainty. Small business is the backbone of our economy, helps create jobs and opportunity. So, you know, one of the things that I don't want us to do is to knee-jerk into Band-Aid approaches. We really need to think long-term. I agree with Mr. Walker that a P-bid is a great way to go. The P-bid has to be a grassroots effort from the actual property owners, but I have stood strong to support the P-bid with both financially and with staff efforts from the city. You know, we have the Dizdar Park, which we have met with the community time and time again, multiple meetings to develop that plan and it's pretty much approved and it will be started soon. You know, the area with the, the school, that is going to take a lot of long-term planning and I'm up for that.
Thank you. Sylvia Garcia, same question to you about plans you have for Old Town?
I have three words for Old Town and that's parking, parking, and parking. I know that people do like to sit outdoors. Unfortunately, that's taking about 10 parking spaces. That's in front of Frida's.
that's taking about ten parking spaces. That's in front of Frida's um pizzeria and the um and ice cream place there. Um and so with, you know, when you talk about housing and mixed buildings, we don't even have enough parking for the people that um that live in those units up above. So we need to decide um as a community what we want Old Town Old Town to look like. Um do we want to support the bo- uh small businesses or do we want to um have these other businesses come in that are more um you know, going to take over and uh increase the rents for the small businesses? So that's where we need to go and um ask our residents. Um and I know for District Two, they do not want to expand Old Town and make it look like LA.
Thank you, Sylvia. And we'll go to Sylvia Schnapp for um your thoughts about Old Town.
Thank you. That's a great question. You know, downtown areas are really the heartbeat of the city. You could see that that when you see vibrancy downtown, it really reflects out into all portions of our community. And I'm in full support of making sure that we have the right kind of businesses, making sure that we have um a business-friendly environment, number one, for all businesses. But number two, really, for those that are downtown, I believe that um what we've seen are maybe phase one and phase two, and there's continuation of what we need to do. I believe the multi-use function of, you know, of retail and um customer inviting folks at the down, you know, the first floor level, as well as then creating um housing above. I believe that's one concept that we really need to prove out. Um I certainly applaud what has gone on with the um invitation for people to come out and enjoy downtown by eating outside. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next question. Sylvia Garcia, you'll be up first on that. Let's switch gears. Everyone's talk talking about public safety and the police force. Uh so Sylvia, do you feel the budget for the police services is adequate uh or not? And what are your thoughts about long term? Should the city remain as part of the sheriff's contract? Or should it look into its own police force?
Um, thank you. I am a big supporter of our police force here in Camrio. Um and I, when I say that, I don't mean that I support all police forces across our state or nation. Um especially, you know, it looks very different that what's happening in LA. But I think it's important to keep some of the national problems that are going on away from our city so that we can improve what we need to improve here. Um and right now, the fact is our police force are acting as social workers, therapists, um they are were the only ones that were out during COVID because um a lot of our mental health workers that work for the county were not out. So, yeah, I think that just we need to keep it right where it's at until we can um have better solutions um for our social work that's going on.
Thank you. Jeff, please share with us your plans or thoughts about the budget for the police department and whether it should remain with the sheriff's department or become city operated.
I I think the sheriff's department does a great job in providing police service to the city of Camrio. Um our our current uh commander, uh the other Tennyson uh in town um does a really good job of connecting the police department to the community. Um and which is so important, you know, with 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 parents have retiring in the city. Uh they all they had their home almost broken into. So I know I'm now concerned about their safety. So yeah, for me, it's making sure that our economy is strong and our sales tax revenue is strong. So we have the money to continue to maintain our high level of uh safety in this town. Uh because that's a a quality of life issue. And for the second district, you know, many of us live close to the freeway, which is the prime target area for those that wish us harm. They want to get on that freeway, get out of here. Um so you know, I I think for the resident second districts, it's highly important to keep the uh police funded.
Thank you. And clarification for the audience that the city of Camrio uh serves its or its police force is a contract city provided by the sheriff's department as they do in other cities, but some cities such as Port Wainimi, Simi Valley, Oxnard, they have their own police force. So I think that's what that question is referring to. And we're going to go on to Dirk for the uh same question. Share with us your views about the budget for the police department and whether it's uh effective being with the sheriff's department.
I I think Camrio is the wonderful place to uh live and raise a family uh in large part because of the uh the police officers from the sheriff's department that keep us safe. When I was in the Navy for twenty-four years, I spent twelve years on active duty as a pilot. And then my reserve duty was twelve years in law enforcement units right here at Point Mabue in Port Wainimi, full of Ventura County and LA County sheriffs and police departments. Uh I I am designated a Navy police officer. I am not a real police officer. I'm not making that claim. But I understand that that is the toughest job I can imagine. Uh and it is a slippery slope when you start to hem and haw about support for the police. I'm motivated to run for office because of the recall effort against Susan and Sean. Their worldview is just wrong for Camrio. We don't have those problems and we need the police and we need to support them.
Thank you. Same question to you, Sylvia Schnapp, as far as your position on funding of the police department and staying part of the sheriff.
I applaud what our first responders have done, especially during the COVID time. And so we need to thank our community for stepping up and really providing wonderful and adequate services for for all residents, no matter what age. I believe that um you know, it's it's an issue that is very community-based. I come from Port Wainimi where we had our own police department. And every single time we had a negotiation, you know, it was always about, you know, what can we come to the table with? But what can we walk away with in terms of savings or, you know, adequate response times, et cetera? And I believe what the county sheriff's department has been doing for Camrio has been a wonderful thing. They have a local uh presence. They're out on the streets the entire time. Uh they they help everybody no matter what it is. And uh the response time is wonderful. And so I believe that continuing to work on efforts to promote that, but also give them decent rates as well as coming to the table with benefits for all of us is very important.
Susan, same question to you about your priorities with the sheriff's department with the Camrio Police.
So public safety is one of the most important things that the council is tasked with. Um and I have a very strong relationship with the deputies that serve us and patrol our streets. I have a great relationship with our police commander, a former police commander, and all the deputies who patrol our streets. And I work at the county jail now alongside of these law enforcement officers. Um forming even more relationships and understanding um what they're faced with every day. Um and just to to set the record straight, um we actually in increased the funding to the VCSO um during my term. Um and we actually added a social worker to the Project Hope Car, which is the unit that specifically deals with our homeless population. Um we have also um had a meeting with the commander who was addressing some possible needs to increase staffing, especially some back protection um at the outlets. That was subsequently withdrawn because they simply don't have the staffing right now to support those additions.
Thank you. And we'll wrap up this question with you, David, as far as your priorities with the police force.
Well, first off, I I I'm going to pass on to the current police chief, Jeff Walker's kudos for a phenomenal job. I'll just say from ninety-nine to two thousand and four, the prior Tennyson did a fairly effective job of being police chief. Clearly, with my background at the sheriff's office, I've researched standalone police departments versus contract city police departments. The sheriff's department has provided exemplary service since this city incorporated in nineteen sixty-four. They would be hard pressed to have the same kind of law enforcement presence if they tried to have their own police department. They would have to pay full service for everything from dispatch to patrol to human resources to the city attorney's office. And right now, there is no other alternative that would provide the return on investments that we get from the Ventura County Sheriff's Office. And I will be a bulwark to always support our law enforcement within reasonable bounds um and with justification therein. Thank you.
Jeff, we're going to switch to our next question. And uh even though it's not in either of your districts, it is very important to the entire city as far as what happens with Camrio Springs. We have quite a few questions on the issue. I'll try to summarize them so we can get a thoughtful answer. As far as the Camrio Springs golf course, some say that the city has a requirement to maintain that property. Others want to make sure that it's not developed. And others wonder about your view about converting any golf courses such as Sterling Hills or the Camrio Springs Golf Course into development. So share with us your position on the Camrio Springs Golf Course and converting golf courses in general to housing.
Well, um you know, I mean, nor um I don't think any candidate here can take a position on a specific project that hasn't gone through the environmental impact report or the public hearing stage. Um but you know, talking in broad terms, yeah, I think we have to look at every possible redevelopment option to provide housing reasonably. Um but you know, part of it is that it should come with a recreational yeah, element to it. So and an economic development impact. So if they're providing something of use like a restaurant or um you know, rooftop dining or enhancing the um um ability to um u- use that property for recreation because golf courses are not open to the public. You can't just go out and have a picnic on the 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 fairway. It's 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 open space, but it's not great open space. So something that kind of turns that around and provides recreational opportunities is something that I would look forward to to um, you know, supporting.
Thank you, Jeff. And Sylvia Schnapp, same question to you as far as your views.
As far. Thank you, because you know, this is something that's really important for um the entire community, and I'm glad that this question has come up. Um it is something that um is near and dear to me. You know, I I taught my two sons how to play golf to the Junior Golf League uh that is offered during the summer. And so I am a golfer. Um I enjoy going out on not really nice courses. And I've taken a look at Camrio Springs. And you know, it is, it isn't a sad state of repairs, but it also is something that is of concern for the entire community, not just Camrio Springs. I want to make sure that when we talk about a quality of life for all Camrio, it means all Camrio and it means Camrio Springs as well. You know, I fear the fact that, you know, if if the springs goes uh dormant, that it's going to be a haves versus have-nots, and that community is not going to look like the rest of Camrio. So I'm um I'm taking a stance in terms of how it runs through the council the community to um take a look at.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I'm going to give you another ten seconds, Sylvia, because I accidentally muted you. So please feel free to wrap up your statement again.
Thank you, thank you. So Camrio Springs, I want to make sure that they have the same quality of life that the entire community um has. And I don't want it to be a haves versus have-nots. It's really important to bring them alongside, but also work through the process that we have with the city council and city staff in order to make some either concessions and or then take a look at the options that we have.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Thank you.
And David, uh please share with us your thoughts as far as Camrio Springs Golf Course, as far as you can, as far as maintaining the property and in general converting any golf course in the city to housing.
First off, I believe it's the owners of the golf course that are required to maintain the property. Secondly, I'll take the same tact that most Supreme Court nominees take. I won't make any kind of commitment for anything that will come before city council because I respect the process. I will always listen to both sides of any party, I or of either party. I will listen to city staff's proposals, the developers' proposals, and I will make the decision that I think is in best interest of all residents. I we face that in District One as well with the Sterling Hills. Um there was a proposal before city council to do a redevelopment, zoning change, and I don't think it's appropriate to comment on it unless I'm on city council and have all the information available.
Thank you. Sylvia Garcia, same question to you about your views with Camrio Spring Golf Course, maintaining it and in general converting golf courses.
Um, yes, I mean, I am for open spaces. Um it's not something that I'm well-versed in on on the project itself, so I don't feel comfortable um sharing too much um thoughts on it. I think that it needs to, or for me, I would like to um do more diligence on research and homework on it um before making a comment. And like the others say that um you know, I know if you do uh say you're going to be per or against it, um it then it doesn't allow you to vote on it later. So um but I, what I would say is I would like definitely to have um just more research done when we look at some of these um houses that are going up a ranker of the mound because I just don't want to repeat of the mudslides that happened um several years ago um with the seniors. So um we definitely need to do our due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Dirk, same question to you as far as uh the Camrio Springs and Sterling.
Yeah, I just wanted to to say that I it's a good thing that I'm not running for an IT position because I just now got my sign switched around backwards and it's no longer reading uh, actually, you can actually read it now. So uh you know, again, I I hope that IT uh uh proficiency is not a requirement of the job. I played Camrio Springs, uh Springs one course one time. I'm a good golfer. That's a terrible course. It wouldn't bother me to play a twelve hole course. I listened to the hydrologist for over an hour talk about one thousand year floods. That seems to be kind of a high bar. Um but there are a lot of special interests. I've been contacted with people that wanted to uh feel me out to maybe support my campaign. And their sole interest was that project. So we really need to peel the onion on that one, see who's involved and and make sure that we make a good decision.
Thank you. And we'll wrap up with you, Susan, on your views with Camrio Springs, what you can tell us.
Um so first of all, I need to preface this with with just saying that there there's information that I've been privy to um that's been in in closed session. So th- there is a lot more information that's even public, but this is such a complex project. Um it involves expert-level hydrology studies and analysis based on future modeling. It's in an area that's already been hit by natural disaster, fire, flooding, mudslides, difficulty evacuating. Uh the golf course is in bad shape and needs a huge influx of financial support to rehabilitate and maintain. Uh we need more housing, especially senior housing. Uh the potential for a neighborhood to face a huge change brings out passionate passionate feelings, and there have been a lot of people with passionate feelings about this development. Um and the potential of of an influx of a new housing and rehabilitated golf course and fatalities could be a huge economic driver for the city. So all of these things are are at play. And when that time comes, I will look at all of that information and make a thoughtful and careful decision.
Thank you. Susan, we'll stay with you to go first on the next question. Uh if you are elected to the council, uh tell us about what regional boards and commissions you'd like to serve on, where you have specific interests, where you want to put your energy.
Well, um I would like to continue doing what I'm doing. Um I am on um Clean Power Alliance. I am also on their executive committee and I chair their finance committee. I am so proud of the work that Clean Power Alliance is doing, and I would like to continue my work with with um that board. I also sit on the Ventura County Animal Services Commission. I thoroughly enjoy that, my love for animals. I used to foster for them. I have rescue cats in my home who haven't made an appearance tonight. Um and um I also sit on the airport authority and am very proud of our work there. I have a great working relationship with the director of airports, Keith Freitas. Um and we successfully pushed back on the expansion of the airport. So I would like to continue with all of those um regional committees because I am invested in them. There's been a huge learning curve. And I have really um taken the time and that commitment to to keep working with them and to continue to do that would be um my desire if I elected.
Thank you, Dirk. Uh let's hear from you. If you're elected, what are some of the regional boards or commissions that you'd like to be involved in and why?
I I think I have expertise in transportation from my uh service in the Navy. So any anything involving aviation or transportation, I would want to be a part of. Um I also uh had a degree or minor rather in environmental science. So anything involved with water or air quality, I I think I have some expertise. I've been looking at this stuff for fifty years and I'd like to do that as well. Um the clean power is an interesting thing. I want to make sure that uh we don't uh go get get too far ahead of ourselves with clean power. I have solar panels on my house. I did not do it to save the world. Uh China is building uh coal-powered or coal-powered uh electric plants now and Uh, coal powered or coal powered uh, electric plants now, and we could shut down the entire infrastructure. By the United States and not make a dent in climate change as long as China and India are running wild like they are.
Thank you. Sylvia Garcia, share with us where you would like to serve if you're elected.
Um, I would like to serve on any committees that are dealing with the water. Um, I think that's very important. Um, air pollution also, I think it's important to um. To have a say so, um, anything that's dealing with uh, mental health or. Um, I don't know if there is a committee for uh, community police relations, but that's also, I would be interested in that. And um. As Susan mentioned, the Ventura County um, animal shelter is another committee. I think we can do better with um. Uh, trapping gats and doing T and R on them. So those are what I'd be interested in. Thank you.
Thank you. David, let's hear from you. What would you like to serve on if you're elected?
Well, since the United States Marine Corps was nice enough to transfer me to the CB base in Port Winnie, I think RDP 21. And the benefits we get from the military bases. The military housing in Camarillo and the number of residents we have that serve in the military and have served in the military is an important one. I'm also inter- interested in the regional sanitation district. Um, composting and making sure that we're doing everything we can to not impact our. Uh, landfill, our dumps. And I'm interested in any city council committee that deals with. The law enforcement aspect of Camarillo. And I'm available as a retiree to work. As many hours a week as I have to as a city council member, and I promise to dedicate that time to the residents of Camarillo.
Thank you. Sylvia Schlapp, share with us what you would like to be involved in.
Thank you. As um, a champion for business and the communities that they serve, I'd like to serve on the EDC Collaborative. I have served on that board before as well as then the vice chair of the organization. So I would like to return in that position. Ventura County Council of Governments is something else that I had served on, and I would love to continue the efforts there of looking at some regional and strategic issues. That come alongside and all the government um, agencies, all the city councils and county, take a look at those issues. I have previously served as the, on the executive committee of the California Joint Powers and Insurance. Agency or authority, and so I'd love to return there. Association of Water Agencies is another area that I have very keen interest in. As well as then the Ventura County Regional Sanitation District. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jeff will wrap up with you on this one. Share with us where you would like to serve.
I think it's a, it's a real important question because, you know, serving on these boards and commissions is the one element. I don't think the public realizes is such an important part of this job. Uh, it is uh, communicating with other similar uh, city representatives and being able to articulate and influence people. Uh, to create change. Uh, for me, uh, transportation. Uh, is a huge passion. VCTC would be one organization I'd love to be a part of. Um, we need to work on State Highway 34. We keep saying how we need to improve that. Well, we have to start doing that. It should be in conjunction with upgrading our um, active infrastructure. Uh, pedestrian bike infrastructure um, around. The train station. So Metro Link would be another board. Um, I would love to be a part of because train service, we haven't really talked about it, you know, should be a part of Camarillo's future. And our train station and service is underdeveloped right now. Um, and that, that would be one area where I would like to uh, focus on.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. David, you'll be up first on this one. Share with us a little bit more about why you think you are the best candidate in District One. What do you uh, feel are some of the areas where you've given community service? Share with us a little bit about that and even how long you've lived here.
I've lived here for 43 years. My community service has been both professional as the police chief. Um, and sheriff's captain in Camarillo. I've served on the board of managers of the Camarillo Family YMCA when, when we did the capital campaign in the early 2000s to build the facility. I did two stints on the board of directors of the Boys and Girls Club. The last stint included two years as the chair of the board. We had a successful capital campaign to add a 6,500 square foot addition to our current facility. Where prior to COVID, we were serving over 400 children the day after school. I volunteered in my daughter's school. She's now a principal at a middle school in Camarillo. I volunteer at my two grandson's schools. And I also am involved with Pleasant Valley Lions Club. I have a commitment to service that is longstanding. Been over 30 years, three decades of service to Camarillo. I have the time, I have the energy, and I have the passion to continue serving all of the residents of Camarillo.
Thank you David.
You're welcome.
Stop you there. Susan, same question you share with us where you think you're the best candidate and tell us about some of your community service.
So I do feel that I am the most qualified candidate to be uh, reelected. To the city council. Um, in my, my time here in Camarillo. I have donated my professional time to doctors without Wall Street Medicine Team, providing medical care to the homeless. I've served on, served on Medical Reserve Corps, doing mass vaccination clinics as far back as H1N1. Um, and I have um, served on the Refugee Alliance. Corporation Corp as well. Um, I served um, for all of my son's many sporting events. I was an ASOT mother, regional referee. CYBA and CPBA scorekeeper. Um, and then when my kids were in high school, I was a member of all the PTAs and PTOs. I served as board secretary and president for Rio Mesa High School Music and Pageantry Boosters Club. I volunteered for the animal shelter. I volunteered with Kim's Kidstream Children's Museum. I've served as a judge for numerous Rotary Club youth speech competitions. I am unencumbered and will be able to vote on everything in my district.
Thank you. Sylvia Schnapp, please share with us your, your community service and why you think you're the best candidate.
Thank you. I have over 25 years of serving the community of Camarillo. I was creator of United Ways Day of Caring and what that effectively did is to put boots on the ground. Volunteers, just like all you that are listening and watching tonight. Um, in the communities to volunteer a half a day of service. That had actually then exploded over the last 30 years, working in very large and small cities across the US. Putting hundreds of thousands of volunteers to work. And um, it effectively then connects them to the community. And so. That's how I have operated ever since I became a young adult. Um, I've served on boards such as the um, the Museum of Ventura County to the Ventura County Community. Uh, Foundation on their uh, board to service the nonprofits in the community. I've also volunteered for Interface and um, I was um, you know, a part and parcel of everything that had happened. With the Interface Golf Clinic that we used to have for women.
Thank you.
I'm very qualified collaborator. Thank you.
Dirk will ask you about your history of community service, why you think you're the best candidate.
I've uh, lived and worked in Ventura County for about 30 years. My career in sales. Has been supporting local businesses. I've got credit training from Wells Fargo and an MBA from Pepperdine. I understand what businesses need to thrive. And I can help recruit them into Camarillo. Uh, I'm not woke. I respect all people as unique individuals, not groups. I have zero conflicts of interest. I've uh, supported several charities through 25 years. As a Knight of Columbus. Uh, I've got 24 years uh, service in the military. And we've got two important bases right here in Ventura County. And I have a law enforcement background that helps me respect. How hard that job is. And I don't have to be recalled to come to the conclusion that the police are a good thing for Camarillo.
Thank you. And Jeff, please share with us a little bit about your community service, why you think you're the best candidate.
Well, I have never hesitated to join people of action to improve our community. Most recently with the uh, Heritage Day, Street Fair and Carnival. When we realized the Old Town Association that Fiesta was not going to go on and our town was going to be out without this important event. I headed up a team of small business owners that organized within a short period of time. A pretty complex festival that was well received by the community. You know, prior to that, I was actively involved in the Camarillo Chamber of Commerce. I was uh, the vice chair, also chaired the uh, uh, Old Town. P-Bid Formation Committee, did a lot of work to get that um, project to city council vote. Did not get the support back then 12 years ago. Um, and we've gone a different direction since then. Um, you know, I'm a member of the Rotary Club and um, have really joined and a group of uh, active people there that are changing our community as well.
Thank you. And Sylvia Garcia will wrap up with you on this question about your history of involvement in the community.
Um, yes, thank you. Um, I believe my um. First of all, my military service, um, I have 10 years of that and it's really taught me about. A lot of values that I was able to bring and bring that into um, a council member if I'm elected. Um, I think that the city council has. Not uh. Lately, been able to work together. Um. It, there has been some divisive issues. Um, it's supposed to be nonpartisan and um, I think that. Some of the council members have let some of their uh, political. Um, I wouldn't say agendas, but views um, come in the way. And you need a council member that's going to listen to people and um. Listen to what they're saying and across the board, whether, whether they're Republican, independent or Democrat.
Stop you Sylvia. Um, but you're going to be the first up on the next question. So we'll leave you unmuted. And um, we're getting near the end candidates, but I want to get this question in for sure. And that is climate change and uh, the effects that we're seeing, uh, longer wildfire season. Drought, um, rising sea levels, even though we're not a coastal city. Share with us some of your thoughts about the city, how it can be more resilient with uh, climate change. And uh, any particular policies you want to see the city embark on.
Uh, yes, sir. I read in, in the newspaper, maybe even five years ago, that. Um, climate change was considered one of the biggest threats, um, especially given that we have a Navy base here. Um, so that is really like concerning, um, I think for everybody that. Um, lives uh, on the coast, um, for these um, rising tides that are going to be coming up and creeping on us soon. Um. It's more just about educating the public um, on what to do. Um, and just coming up with more creative ways on what we can do on our part. Um, recycling, um, I do agree, you know, I'm really glad that we finally have the compost that's out there. Um, so we can recycle our food and that kind of, that will take less methane that's going into. Um, our landfill and going to the air. So we need more measures like that to happen to our, our town and our city. Thank you.
Sylvia Schnapp, same question to you about how the city can prepare for changes uh, in the climate and around us.
Thank you. As chair of the Ventura County Climate Emergency Council. It was something that was developed and put into place by our Board of Supervisors a few years ago. And so I began serving February of 2021. It's a two-year chairmanship. What we're doing there is um, a several-pronged approach and that is where how, how can we affect reducing G, um. Um, GHGs within the unincorporated area. Certainly there are things that we can do in the community of Camarillo. But effectively what we've taken a look at is, you know, could we shore up some um, opportunities in order to educate the community? Number one. Number two is, you know, it's going to take a little bit of everybody putting, you know, rolling up their sleeves and getting involved. And it could be businesses, it could be what you do within a city building. It could be. Those things that you can incorporate and take a look at reducing GHDs. By either new purchases, by looking at opportunities concert to conserve and save as well as. Thank you.
Stop you there. Susan, same question to you about dealing with climate impacts.
So, climate change is one of the most important things that we are dealing with and we're dealing with as a city and as a nation and as a world. In fact, Ventura County has been um, identified as the most impacted county in the nation. The most impacted county in the nation by climate change. And I think, I don't have to list all the ways that we are experiencing this. What have I done so far? Um, with Clean Power Alliance? Um, I helped lead the adoption of 100% green energy power level. That was. A huge impact that we are making on our carbon footprint as a city. Um, we have also gone forward with a project on some of the city. Properties to install more solar battery storage and EV chargers. What I want to do, I want to partner with more businesses and help them. Partner with all of the rebates and the financing that is available for more solar, battery and EV charging. I want to make sure that we finish our sustainability action plan. We need to be a leader. We need to figure out what we're going to do with organic waste because we don't have a solution right now.
Thank you Susan. Jeff, please share with us how you think the city should deal with impacts related to climate change.
Yeah, I, I think the first step to fly, fighting uh, climate change is to make our cities more walkable and bikeable. Um, and again, the second district was, a lot of it was laid out in, in, you know, around the railroad station where people walk to get to places. Uh, we've, we've destroyed that with a lot of traffic through these uh, low income neighborhoods where people a lot of times don't have cars. Our road safety plan. Didn't acknowledge the fact that all three pedestrian fatalities in the study happened in the second district. And we did nothing other than paint. To upgrade the, the safety of pedestrians in the district. We need to have safe streets for people to walk and bike on. More and more people are connecting quality of life with the amount of places they can safely walk to from where they live. Just simply upgrading our bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure should be the first step to fighting climate change.
Thank you. David, share with us your thoughts and policies that you've put in place to deal with changes related to climate change.
You know, clearly, climate change is real. I won't debate the causes of it, but I tend to serve by example. Um, in 2016, I put solar panels on my house and a whole, whole home battery backup system. I use an e-bike to do most of my daily errands in Camarillo. I still have two combustion. Um, vehicles. Um, I pull my little doggies in the trailer to go to the dog park twice a day. I do whole home composting as much as possible. And I would encourage all city facilities. To have solar panels and battery backups in order to set an example for all the residents. And I'd be in favor of. Some type of grant funding and tax breaks for residents to do the same types of things. Thank you.
You're welcome. And Dirk, let's hear from you. You'll be last on this question. Share with us your thoughts about what the city should do to deal with impacts from climate change.
I am sure that I'm the only person on this panel that believes that climate change is exaggerated. There was a book by a man named Michael Schellenberger. Who has 30 years in the environmental uh, industry. He has undeniable bona fides there called Apocalypse Never. And he says that it is happening. We're not sure that we're creating it and most of the solutions that are proposed make things worse. Um. The basic science, when they say CO2 is a pollutant, I sell CO2. Every time we speak, we exhale CO2. Life on this planet would cease to exist without CO2. They, they, they say you have to believe the science, but then they call people like me skeptics. That's what they called Galileo when he said that. You know, that, that, the, the, the solar system was being viewed incorrectly. You should be skeptical about these things because they cost money.
Thank you Dirk. Going to have to stop there. And I'm going to start with you on this last question Dirk. Um, just tell us, and this will be the final one, but give you, I'm going to give all of you a chance to talk about your campaigns. Some of you are longtime candidates, some of you are new. But the process you're going through, share with us, will you disclose and be transparent about? Uh, donations to your campaign. Some of that's public record, but others aren't. Uh, tell us how you're organizing your campaign. How are you getting volunteers and how are you working in your district? Versus the city in general. So what I'm asking Dirk is, tell us about this process of being a candidate, what you're finding, where you're. Doing particular things and how you're promoting transparency.
Fair enough. Transparency is a very important term and I'm glad you brought that up. I did not spend thousands of dollars to hire a consultant. I'm old enough that I've thought about these things for a long time and I know what I believe. You may or may not like my positions, but I guarantee you that I'm going to tell you the same thing. As I tell every other person in every other room in Camarillo. I am basically a one man band. I have been told that you need a boatload of money to win this race and I don't believe that's true. I'm not going to spend too much of my own money and I'm not really in, looking for donations. I'm certainly not looking for endorsements. I've been invited to kiss. I'm certainly not looking for endorsements. I've been invited to kiss the ring and beg for endorsements, but endorsements come with strings. And as far as transparency goes, if you really want to know somebody who's not beholden to anybody, take a look at my website and you'll see one right here.
Thank you. David, same question to you. Tell us about your campaign, how you're organizing it, how you're promoting transparency.
Well, first of all, I'll tell you, I'll take all of Dirk's donations if he wants. I'm self-funding most of my campaign, but I am doing fundraising. I have hired a political consultant to help me with social media and mailers. I'm walking my districts. I intend to walk it myself more than once. I have family members that will assist me. I won't name all of them because there could be a conflict. I intend to reach out to all of Camrio residents, not just District One, because if elected, I won't just represent District One. I'll be elected from District One, but I'll represent the entire city. I've been here a long time. I've always made myself available, and I will always continue to make myself available.
Thank you. Jeff, share with us your organizing of your campaign, the district you're in, and your efforts to promote transparency.
Yeah, I got into this race really about the, the issues that I feel most passionate about for residents of the second district. My, my campaign is, is scrappy. I, I don't have a consultant. I'm a small business owner. I'm taking that kind of approach to it. I also, I, I'm not raising more than ninety-nine dollars from anybody, any individual contributor. I, I, you know, I, again, I think, you know, there are, there are issues that come with that. My, my focus is, is canvassing neighborhoods and, and talking to voters. And I'm, I'm really been encouraged by the amount of people that same, see the same issues in the second district with road safety and developing our downtown and dealing with the abandoned buildings. So it's, it's been very encouraging that the issues I'm passionate about are shared by others in the community.
Thank you. Susan, please share with us the strategy around your campaign and how you're promoting transparency.
So I probably developed my strategy four years ago when I ran for the first time. I was asked to run by numerous people, and I used those people that supported me and wanted my leadership to help build my base, if you want to call it that. And I have nurtured that base by meeting with them, by working with them throughout my first term. And so really, it was just asking them to continue that support and carry it on. I don't have a paid consultant. I do have a campaign manager and multiple people that are helping me at, at different levels. You know, our first, the way you win elections is by talking to people. It's not about signs, it's about knocking on doors. And four years ago, we, we touched over eight thousand doors, and I planned to walk the entire district. And we'll do that again. Listening to people, talking to people and showing up.
Thank you. Sylvia Garcia, please share with us how you're running your campaign and promoting transparency.
Uh, yes, so I, this is my first time running, so I'm learning as I go. After I get my booster this week, I do plan just going door-to-door, and honestly, that's all I'm planning on doing. I am not funded by anybody or have donations coming in. If I get some, that's great, but really, my plan is just to talk to people, get a feel of what they want. I did a little bit of that. For many of us, we got their signatures. And I walked door-to-door getting those, and I was able to talk to people about some of their concerns. So, so yeah, that's just my strategy, is just walking and talking, and that's what I'm going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll wrap up with you, Sylvia Schnapp. Tell us about your campaigns, how you're organizing it and how you're promoting transparency.
You know, all the metrics that everybody has talked about, whether it's, you know, walking the precincts and meeting your constituents to then, you know, signs and other things on social media, we're employing all of that. It, it also points to transparency. I'm about transparency. I'm about transparency at City Council. I'm about transparency in the City Hall. And it reflects then in my campaign. So I buy by all FPPC rules, including anything over ninety-nine dollars is going to be, you know, detailed, and the limit is forty-nine hundred per person. And so my campaign also includes volunteers. I've attended a church in Camrio for about ten years, and so I have an extensive network of volunteers in the community. Also, I've worked in the community for twenty-five years and raised my kids and put them through private school here in Camrio. So I know people throughout the community as well as in my district. And so it's just going out and reaching and touching the constituents and asking them questions and really listening and engaging. Thank you.
Well, we've reached that point where we're going to go ahead and start our closing statements. We're going to do this in the reverse order from the beginning. First up will be candidate Jeffrey, Jeff Walker in District Two. Jeff, whenever you're ready, you have one minute.
Uh, thank you, David. I do want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum to allow the residents of Camrio to make an informed decision come November. And I, and I think, you know, you're, you're going to have a choice here to make. I, I really got into this race to improve the quality of life for residents of the second district. I, I, I feel that we've been underserved. We have the lowest amount of parking, because we're surrounded by dangerous intersections. And we have the poorest quality sidewalks and bike lanes, you know, and most of the district lives within a quarter mile of the freeway. We have a lot of health risks because of that. And it's important that we address that by providing additional recreational opportunities. I love Camrio. I'm proud to own a business here. I have a background in public accounting that allowed me to serve the City Council in a proper manner.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. And Sylvia Schnapp, you're up next. Please share with us your closing statement.
Thank you. I hold an MBA in Finance from Calhoun University, and I've been a professional in business covering regional, multi-state and national roles with large organizations. I consider myself, you know, a political expert, but not necessarily when it comes to everything that there is to do. And so I'm here to serve the community and serve them well. I have a role as a convener, a collaborator, a colleague, a champion and a manager who empowers others in order to make the best decisions possible for all our constituents. I've committed on day one to begin with the experience that I come to serve this community of Camrio with diligence, integrity, respect, and I thank you in advance of your support. I've also filled out a Voter's Edge profile you could see, as well as you could reach me at SylviaForTheNumberFourCouncil@gmail.com. And my website is SylviaForTheNumberFourCouncil.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia Schnapp is running in District One. Also in District One is our next candidate, David Tennyson.
Thank you, David, and thank you, League of Women Voters, for this opportunity. I am the candidate that has lived in Camrio the longest and has sustained active involvement in nonprofits, civic groups, service groups, and had the opportunity to lead the Camrio Police Department for five years. I also have an education that assists me. I have a bachelor, bachelor's degree in organizational leadership and a master's degree in public administration. I am committed to Camrio because I have two young grandsons, an eight-year-old and a five-year-old. I want to see them have the same opportunities I have. I also want to serve the senior community, which is a significant population in Camrio, and work with the Pleasant Valley Wreckin Park District to try and increase and improve the senior center in Camrio. I have the passion, the time and the commitment to serve all residents of Camrio, and I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, David, and we'll now move to the next candidate, Sylvia Garcia in District Two.
Um, yes, um, so I would like to also thank the League of Women Voters for having me. I am new to this, but the reason that I am running is because I am very passionate about my hometown. I was born in Ventura at the Medical Center, but I grew up here. And this was my hometown when I came back from the military. So I am passionate about people and helping people. I believe that is my calling in life, is to help others. So some of the platforms that I've taken are for mental health. The pandemic has done a number on people on their mental health, increased anxiety. Also, education. I really want to see our kids catch up to their great level. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Dirk Lay in District Two.
Susan is supported by the Progressive Democrats and their allies with those strings attached. Jeff has the support of the establishment Republicans and has potentially very serious conflicts of interest in Old Town. What part of nonpartisan don't they seem to understand? Apparently, all of it. I am a retired military officer with an MBA, decades of experience in business and law enforcement, and I have the courage to resist dumb ideas and running with the herd. My goal is for all the voters in my district to spend five minutes on my website and make an informed choice. You should research all the candidates for all the offices. None of us are perfect. We're all working hard, but you will like one of us better than the other, and that person deserves your vote. Look at www.electdirklay.com. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next candidate is Susan Santangelo in District Two.
So I'd like to start by thanking the organizers who worked so hard to host these forums and keep our community informed and prepared for local elections. During my first term, I have implemented a two-million-dollar grant and loan program for our small local businesses. I've helped maintain a balanced budget and healthy reserves during an unprecedented pandemic. I've led to the adoption of one hundred percent green energy power level. I've helped prevent unwanted expansion of the Camrio Airport. I've improved oversight of VCSO. I've launched a public art and mural program, and I've researched and adopted the local road safety plan. My commitment to serve local businesses, seniors and young families has earned me the endorsement of Congressman Julia Brown, Assemblywoman Jackie Irwin, District Attorney Eric Nazarenko, and Ventura County Supervisors Linda Parks, Kathy Long, and the late Carmen Ramirez, and Camrio Mayor Sean Mulchett, and I don't owe them anything for their endorsement. When reelected, I will continue to champion data-backed, responsible and sustainable solutions for the issues facing our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you to all the candidates. It's a heavy lift for anybody to run for office. It impacts their families. And so we thank you all for doing your part to maintain our democracy and run for office. I want to just take a moment to share with our audience some information about the upcoming election. Ballots will go out in just a few weeks on October tenth. That'll be mailed to all voters. You can sign up at the state's website, where'smyballot.sos.ca.gov to have your ballot, to notify you at every stage where your ballot is. Has it been received in the Dropbox or in the mail? Has it been received at the county elections? Has it been processed? There's other information available too up there, voterzedge.org/ca. Ballapedia has information, and you can always visit our website, www.lwventuracounty.org. All of our forums are up on that website. Just click on Candidate Forums. You can register for other forums. You can also watch video of this forum. It should be posted within about twenty-four hours. So with that, I once again like to thank our volunteers and our candidates, volunteers Cheryl Coller, Pat Essick, Maddie Park, our president Kathy Morgan. I'm David Maron, reminding everyone, please vote. Thank you so much for watching tonight, and with that, we'll go ahead and say goodnight.